Morning, members. Welcome to the Panel on Administration of Justice and Legal Services. We have attained the call and our call the meeting to order. As members are aware, we have a couple of items for decision at this meeting. At the sixteenth of October, meeting, members, after some discussions, have raised some questions or some comments about the schedule of meetings on the seventeenth of October. Myself and the vice-chair had a meeting with the secretariat in relation to the schedule of meetings having regard to members' views. And we have identified three options. The first one is the fourth Monday of each month at four thirty P M. Option two, the fourth Tuesday of each month at four thirty P M. And these two options are proposed having regard to members' comments. And they would like to adopt the four thirty slot because the two bar associations and the law society would be having a better chance of attending our meeting. The third option is the fourth Friday of each month at ten forty-five A M. The secretariat will keep these time slots for the time view. And I hope that we can express our views on those three options. I'd like to listen to what members have to say. Mr. Dennis Quoc. Madam Chair, myself and the two legal professions had some discussions and they would like me to express their views having regard to the minutes of the previous meetings. The two legal professions attended eighty percent of our meetings. And I very much hope that four thirty would be the time slot adopted for this meeting so that the two legal professions would be able to attend our meetings. Right, I heard the views of the vice-chairman. That's why we have made available two four thirty slots for members to choose from. Miss Emily Lau, yes, I go along with that. I think that the secretariat has tabled to us the situation regarding the fourth term, the attendance by the two legal professions. Now, we have the four-year statistics. The attendance rate is pretty high. I think that we have to facilitate their attendance here. We should make it easier for them to come here after the court hearings. A morning session may be inconvenient for them. Last, at the last meeting, most of the members did not sit on the previous term meetings. This information is made available to us by the secretariat relating to the attendance record. Some members said that they may not attend our meetings all that often. But if you refer to the table, they attend quite a lot. And I hope that we would make it convenient for them. Any further views? Or any further views? If not, I think out of the three options, we discussed with the vice-chairman, we said that we would spend the last couple of days consulting the relevant people in relation to the best scheduled. There are certain members who would like to pick either of the three motions. Now, option two, subject to members' agreement, we will have option two, the fourth Tuesday of each month at four thirty P M. Would this be acceptable to members? All right, if this is agreeable, then we so decide. The schedule has been circulated to members. I look forward to seeing you all here and contributing your views. The next item, which is more important, is for us to decide on the items for discussion. At the last meeting, there was a papers made available to members containing all the various subjects. Some were covered by the previous term but have to be followed up. Others are considered urgent by the Director of Administration. Like in October, we have the pay rise for the judiciary judicial officers. And this, on the September twenty-eighth, October twenty-seventh and October fourteenth, I have received additional information from the secretariat. C B four forty, stroke twelve, hyphen thirteen, bracket O two. I am sure that members have received that paper. On the twenty-eighth of September, the Bar Association submitted a paper hoping to set up an independent legal authority. The bracket O three is from the Hong Kong International Arbitration Centre. They would like to seek our views. Bracket O four, on October seventeenth, there are fifteen members who wrote to me about the convening of a special meeting to discuss the recent remarks made by Ms. Elsie Leng, Deputy Director of the Basic Law Committee. Now, the three papers have been circulated to members. And I hope that we can make some decisions today on these three papers. And members are welcome to air their views. Right, the floor is open. Dr. Quoc. Madam Chair, fifteen members wrote to the madam chair. Now, the open statements made by Ms. Elsie Leng has created echoes in the legal profession. The two legal professions issued open statements as to say that this will be detrimental to one country, to systems and the judicial. And this is a matter of utmost importance. And I believe that we have to convene a special meeting with so many members here today. Perhaps we should decide when this is going to take place. For the other items, I think we have to deal with them as well. But this is a matter of importance. And this has been a matter of concern to the community for so long. We ought to have a meeting on this. Miss Emily Lau. Madam Chair, could you go along with Dr. Quoc Akki? The independent judicial system rule flaw are the cornerstone of Hong Kong. And I hope that we should have a meeting urgently. We should invite various people, some maybe in support, some maybe against. But we have to let people know that we have had great importance to that. And this is concerning us. And we should pick a date for this meeting. Mr. Quoc. On the sixteen, sixteenth of October, the Chief Executive already responded to my letter. He mentioned not only the independence of the judiciary, but also the interpretation of the basic law. So under these circumstances, and bear in mind that this is a matter of public concern, we should have a special meeting on this very subject. Mr. Tam Yu Chong. Madam Chair, Ms. Elsie Leng has retired for so many years. According to reports, she gave a lecture at one of the tertiary institutions. And these are the remarks made at the lecture, not in public. But that came out in the public domain. And some people held different views to hers. And that should be fine in our community because everyone should be entitled to freedom of speech. Now, she made the remarks and the two legal professions held different views. They have issued public statements already. And if this panel has to invite Ms. Elsie Leng and all the relevant people to come here for a special meeting, then I see some problems with that. First of all, I can't see an urgency for a special meeting. I mean, a special meeting is about something urgent. We have the regular meeting on a monthly basis. I don't think we should jump to any special meeting in this regard. Second, Ms. Elsie Leng said something about the judiciary at one of her lectures. And we invite her to share with us our views. That should be fine, subject to her consent. But if it is a case in which someone said something and we had to haul her before us for a public trial, then that it is something that we should not do. I don't think we should be giving this perception. Maybe this is not what people have in mind. But I think we should avoid this perception. It all depends on whether Ms. Elsie Leng would like to take on our invitation. It's not really, Madam Chair. We all have faith in our judicial system. The judiciary can take its independent decision, we have faith in it. Of course, I respect the views of different people in the community, including those of the two legal professions. If members would like to raise this for discussion, I also respect that. But I think that we should put it on the agenda as one of the agenda items. There are other items for discussion as well. Of course, we have respect those that have been invited to see whether they would accept the invitation. Ms. Claudia Bo. Just by way of clarification, freedom of speech is not about absolute equality. It all depends on the status of the standing of a particular person. I mean, someone with a high stature would be saying, would be attached a different weight to an ordinary folk in a community. Ms. Elsie Leng is the Deputy Director of the Basic Law Committee. She should not make remarks in a casual manner unless she's talking to herself behind closed doors or if unless she's chatting with someone over a dinner table. But we are talking about a public forum, a public place. Now, we said that we should not be too surprised about what she said. Are the two legal professions really making a fuss out of this? Now, there is an urgency about this matter because we are dealing with the cornerstone of our community, which is being chipped away, freedom of journalism, freedom of speech, independence of the judiciary. I think we ought to have a special meeting quick, inviting Ms. Elsie Leng to join us.
Ms. Chan Chang. Madam Chair, I read from the papers that the remarks were made by Ms. Elsie Leng on, at an open forum. And it was on a private occasion, at a private lecture, when she made these remarks to a group of students. The Legislative Council should safeguard the freedom of speech of the Hong Kong people. No matter whether those remarks were regarded as right or wrong, we should not take away the freedom of speech. Well, some say that Ms. Elsie Leng as vice, is the deputy chairman of the Basic Law Committee. But I'd like to say that we all wear different hats here. And if you make remarks on behalf of a particular group, then your remarks represent that organization. Otherwise, your remarks will only represent your thoughts, just like the councillors here. We all make remarks, but we can, sometimes we only make remarks to represent, to express our views. It doesn't represent our council. Now, coming back to the terms of reference of the council, our duty is to scrutinize the legislation, not to comment on other people's remarks. So the, our panel should not interfere with the freedom of speech. And we should not waste time in discussing these issues. Mr. Wong Yook Man. Of course, I think this is important. Ms. Chan Chang's remarks are fallacy. Well, she is the deputy chairman of the Basic Law Committee. She is the former Secretary for Justice. That was not a private discussion, nor was it a private occasion. The remarks were made at the lecture at the tertiary institution. Those remarks were picked up by the media. And there is already a great social impact. So all the talk about the remarks being made in private are nonsense. What's wrong in inviting her to come and explain? It's not a public trial. You should give her an opportunity to explain. It's better than not having this meeting or not hearing an explanation from her. It's not fair. It's not fair to her. And you don't know whether she will come or not. So it is necessary to have a special meeting as soon as possible to invite her to come. Next, Mr. Albert Ho. A lot of members have spoken and we, our time is running short. I hope that, if possible, during the first round, each member will be given a three-minute speaking time limit. How many members would like to speak? Mr. Ngung Sin, Chen Kam Lam, and Mr. Paul Che, and Mr. Martin Liu. So the speaking time limit will be shortened to one minute because I'd like more members to be given the opportunity to speak. Well, just now I heard you say, Mr. Albert Ho, oh, this whole Chinese. Well, our Hong Kong people have faith in our judicial system. Well, someone makes some remarks, but I think it's unacceptable that you, that these remarks are regarded as an interference to the judicial system in Hong Kong. And I'm shocked to hear that just now a member said that the freedom of speech is not about absolute equality. Secondly, I am not against the idea of inviting Ms. Elsie Leng to come here to explain to us or ease the doubts of the public. I agree. I just want to say, to express my personal view on the freedom of speech. Next, Mr. Eleanor.
Well, I think that councillors need to be vigilant. You should not think that your remarks made in public only express your personal view. You are, after all, councillors. And members who are in the high echelon of their political parties must be particularly vigilant because your remarks will definitely have an influence on your party's view. Of course, we have faith in our judicial system. But it doesn't mean that we can test the faith. And as said just now, as said on Wednesday's council meeting, well, even if you manufacture a car which can go unharmed after crashing towards a wall, it doesn't mean that you should do so. Now, in terms of the terms of reference, at the outset, it says that the council or the panel monitors matters related to the administration of justice and legal services, including the effectiveness of the relative or the efficiency of the relative government departments. Now, Secretary for Justice is one of the related persons. And he sent out the Government Information Service to give a response. But he himself did not make any response. I'd like to invite him to come and, because he is an influential figure. So I'd like to have this special meeting and I'd like to invite the Secretary for Justice. We have a number of members still in line waiting to speak for the first time. Mr. Ngung Sin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Having heard different views from members, I have two points to make. Well, we have a list of issues suggested to be considered. So timing is a concern for a panel. Is there time for us to discuss every issue? We need to think about the priority of issues. Whether the issues are so important to be given priority. Next is about the status. Well, if we attach such great importance to a member of the Basic Law Committee, then in future, we also need to attach importance to the remarks made by, for example, many officials. Because of the background, every day we hear remarks made by former government officials, including the former secretary, former chief secretary for justice, chief secretary for administration. If we invite them to come and give a speech just because we dislike what they say, then definitely we won't have enough time. So in terms of necessity, we can invite everyone. But in terms of importance, we should give it a more careful thought before we invite everyone to come. Mr. Albert Ho.
I think many members are still unclear about this concept. Ms. Elsie Leng is not a retiree. It's true that she's no longer the Secretary for Justice. But she is the deputy director of the Basic Law Committee. She, the Basic Law Committee has a constitutional status. She is a member from Hong Kong in this Basic Law Committee. And for matters related to basic law, this committee must be consulted. It's a committee under the N P C S C. So since she holds this status, what she says will lead to very profound influence and political influence. The wide, the repercussions and the reactions of the two legal professions happened not without reason. It's not just about a retired lady giving a speech at a university lecture. What she said reflects what she thinks and it will have a profound influence in the future. Therefore, it should be given priority for discussion. I agree that the two legal professions and as well as the Secretary for Justice should attend because it's about the core values of Hong Kong. So there is urgency in this issue. Next, Mr. Chen Kam Lam.
I think judicial independence in Hong Kong is very important. But equally important is an individual's right to enjoy freedom of speech. It should be equal before everyone. No matter you are a government official or an ordinary citizen, there should be equality. How can you say that because you're a government official, equality doesn't apply? I don't understand. Ms. Elsie Leng spoke about the problems. Why couldn't she do that? There are problems in our society. If indeed there are problems, we should try to resolve the problems. If not, so be it. How can we ask people to come and be grilled and be put on a trial just because what they say are not to your liking? We still have livelihood issues worthy of our concern. There are so many such issues. I think that the issue is raised deliberately by some people. And I think the Panel on Administration of Justice and Legal Services should not casually invite people to attend our meeting just because we dislike their remarks. This is an oppression of the freedom of speech and this is not what our panel should do. Some members may think that, well, it's okay to invite her to come, but I don't agree. This will send an alarming signal to people in Hong Kong. You will be invited to come here and give an explanation if your remarks are not to our liking. So I don't agree. It's now ten twenty-seven and I have the power to extend the meeting by fifteen minutes. I think we have this necessity to extend the meeting. So I'll extend the meeting by fifteen minutes. We still, I'll draw a line here. We still have a number of members who have raised their hands. Mr. Ma Feng Quo, Mr. Chan Kim Po, please be concise. And I think that we may need to put this matter to a vote. And I also need to seek members' consent to put it on the agenda. There are still other items to be discussed at our regular meeting. And this will have to be agreed by members. And some members think that this is a necessary issue for discussion. And also we'll continue with our discussion. Mr. Paul Che.
Madam Chair, we need to look at the nature of this incident and what's the purpose of our invitation. Well, of course, it depends on the status of the person and what we are trying to clarify. If we think that the remarks are not appropriate and yet we magnify the issue by inviting her to come to our panel, then unless we're asking her to withdraw the remarks, I think it's white terror. If members think that because of her status as a member of the Basic Law Committee, her remarks are not appropriate and this is the approach that we take, it will only worsen the matter. Should we give the related person some room? I think it's contrary to freedom of speech and due process. To some extent, we often advocate freedom of speech. We encourage people to speak up. We encourage people to speak up. But it's contrary to all these ideas. I don't understand that it's a small incident and yet you're trying to magnify it.
What about the convening of a special meeting? I have reservation because we only do so in case of urgent business. Now, some people feel resentful and that that's understandable, but I don't think this is something for the government to decide immediately whether to interpret the Basic Law or make any special arrangement. I don't think time-wise we should make an exception and convene a special meeting at all. And I don't think we should depart from our usual practice. I must emphasize that Ms. Elsie Long spoke at an educational institution. She wasn't there making the statements in her capacity as Deputy Director of the Basic Law Committee. And now, now, she has been playing down on this, but people seem to be reluctant to play down the issue. But on the contrary, they tried to play up the issue and they talked about the judicial system crumbling and so on. We are really going against what we usually do. Mr. Martin Liao.
Madam Chair, I think Ms. Elsie Long was making her personal comments. I'm sure a lot of us may not subscribe to this idea. She gave a lecture for two hours. If the two remarks that she made would be detrimental to the judiciary in Hong Kong, then this is stretching it too much. I know some senior judges, I know some judges. Now, these simple statements made by Ms. Elsie Long, I don't think there has been any impact at all. It is true that Ms. Elsie Long is the Deputy Director of the Basic Law Committee, but I've seen many Basic Law Committee members who wrote a lot of articles on rule of law and I've never seen the AJLS Panel inviting them to offer an explanation. Referring to Mr. Dennis Quoc's letter to the Chief Executive, he asked the Chief Executive whether Ms. Elsie Long's remarks represented the position of the SAR government. It seems that the convening of a meeting is that the public can know about the government's position on rule of law. Now, what is the point of inviting Ms. Elsie Long? Are we merely asking her whether she said what she said? So I don't think we should invite Ms. Elsie Long. Now, of course, we can invite her. It's up to her to decide whether to come along or not. I don't see the need for a special meeting. But I don't think that just because of a personal remark made by a Deputy Director of the Basic Law Committee doesn't mean that we should have a special committee, a special panel meeting. And this is making a fuss of it. But we can put this on the regular meeting.
Mr. Jay, Madam Chair, as to whether we should have the special meeting, I keep an open mind about it. I think we have to respect the relevant people as whether they would like to attend or not. I heard some members who said that freedom of speech is not about equality. Now, in Hong Kong, the most cherished thing we have is the freedom of speech. Mr. Ma Feng Kuo. Now, Mr. Ma is not speaking through.
Well, I feel very confused about what I heard. Ms. Elsie Long made the remarks. In what capacity did she make the remarks? When we invite her to come along to the panel? What capacity are we inviting her? Now, if she's a Deputy Director of Basic Law Committee, she's a central government official, we don't have the room to invite her in that capacity. But if she is just a Hong Kong resident or a former government official, if she's making the remarks in that capacity, then her freedom of speech should be respected. I think we have to make a distinction between the two. What capacity are we inviting her? So I feel that she made the remarks and this is of concern to the community. Perhaps we can have an informal meeting. We can invite Ms. Elsie Long for an informal exchange of opinions to clarify what she said. I think that that would be conducive to enabling us to understand her position. She does, her remarks do carry weight and I think we have to attach importance to her capacity. I don't think we should have, we should invite her to a special panel meeting because I'm not sure about her capacity. Right, the last two members, one minute each. Mr. Chen Kin Po and Mr. Chen Kam Lam, Madam Chair. Now, if we are not happy with the remarks of anybody, then we haul them before us, that would be white terror. We attach importance to freedom of speech. It was on eleven of October that Ms. Elsie Long wrote to the two legal professions. She made it very clear that she believed that the two legal professions would uphold the freedom of speech, including that of Ms. Elsie Long herself. Also, in relation to basic law. In fact, she talked about this a lot in nineteen ninety-nine. She didn't make any remarks which were completely new. And there were lots of discussions by academics and scholars. Now, in the letter, she said that regretfully she had to write this letter in order to uphold her own freedom of speech. I think we ought to tread pretty carefully. We can keep this on the agenda. We can invite her. But I don't think we should make people think that she's done something wrong. We're hauling her before us. I mean, I don't think it's good enough for us to attack anybody who says something that we don't really like. Madam Chair, I'd like to clarify certain things. Now, some members said that by inviting some members of the public to come here, then it would be a public trial. It would be no good. And we're talking about the two legal professions, Ms. Elsie Long and all the stakeholders are being invited to sit together to talk about something of concern to us. Now, if Ms. Elsie Long would like to reflect to us through the poor establishment members that this is a white terror and that she is scared, I think we're underestimating Ms. Elsie Long. We have heard from twenty members and they think we can allow a second round. We have about six minutes left. I think that we have to take a decision on the subject. We have diverse views from our discussion. Why don't we put it to the vote? All right, for them, so. The first one is whether we have a special meeting. The second thing is whether we keep this as a routine agenda item and we invite Ms. Elsie Long. Now, if the first idea is rejected, then we move on to the second idea. Last time, we have made available the agenda. Now, we have five minutes thirty seconds or so. Dr. Quok Kaki.
Madam Chair, you talked about two things. I think what is most important is, first of all, we have to take a decision as to whether we should invite Ms. Elsie Long. And then we move on to decide whether we should have a special meeting. We have so many members who said that we should let Ms. Elsie Long, the two legal professions, say what they have to say. We have to decide whether she should be invited. And if we don't do it in a special meeting, then we can have this at the first routine meeting. Well, the first thing being voted on is whether we invite Ms. Elsie Long to the panel regarding her reasoned remarks. Dr. Quoc, let me clarify this. The letter says that we'd like to discuss these remarks. Now, we have to decide whether we should hold this meeting. And then we have to decide whether we should invite Ms. Elsie Long, the two legal professions and so on. Dr. Quoc, I think we have discussed with the Secretariat the special meeting or regular meeting. Now, usually, once a meeting has been set up, we then move on to decide who should be invited. Now, you have raised this point and then we should put it to the vote. So let's come back to my proposal. Should we have a special meeting? All right, let's put it to the vote. Mr. Tam Yu Jong. Chairman, it's you who is presiding over the meeting of Quok Kaki. I don't think you should be swayed by Ms. Dr. Quoc. All right, let's put this to the vote, the first proposal. Shall we convene a special meeting? For those in favor of a special meeting, please raise their hands. Those against special meeting? Any abstentions? Abstentions? Fifteen to twelve. Twelve in favor, fifteen against. So the proposal of a special meeting is not carried. All right, a regular meeting? An item in a regular meeting? Of those who are in favor of having this item on a regular meeting agenda? Fifteen. Those against having this discussed at regular meeting? What capacity are we inviting Ms. Long in? What capacity are we inviting her in? Now, panel meetings? Now, we invite Ms. Elsie Long? Shall we invite her as Deputy Director of the Basic Law Committee or what capacity? I don't think we have time for discussion yet. Let's put it to the vote. Well, that would make a difference to whether or how I vote. I don't think we have time to discuss this. Let's put it to the vote first. Now, any members against discussion at a regular meeting? Well, Madam Chair, if we do not get this clarified, it would affect the way I vote. We didn't discuss the capacity we invited Ms. Elsie Long in. Now, we have to prepare the information if she is indeed invited. Those against? One. Fifteen in favor of discussion of this item and regular meeting, one against. All right, then let's move on to the regular meeting. Please refer to the schedule. The next regular meeting is October the thirtieth.
According to the endorsed timetable, the next regular meeting will be scheduled for the twenty-seventh of October. Madam Chair, just now you mentioned that the judiciary would like us to talk, to discuss the two items. First, on judicial service paid adjustment and also on the creation of a post of the Deputy Principal Government Counsel in the Prosecutions Division. Because of the urgency of these two items, should we hold a special meeting? Actually, this is what we're discussing. These two items are on the agenda and we're proposing discussion in October. And there is a time slot on Tuesday for thirtieth of October. Yes, Mr. Michael Tin? Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm speaking for the first time. Well, members discussed at length whether it's urgency to, a matter of urgency to invite Ms. Elsie Long to come. So we can just issue a letter inviting her to come and those remarks have been made. There will not be any changes in the coming months. It's not a matter of urgency. So we can discuss the urgent issues in November before inviting her to attend in December. It's not like there are many things going on out there. It's not like Hong Kong will be paralyzed if she doesn't clarify her position. Thank you, Mr. Michael Tin, for your comments. Now, concerning the first two items, they are items of urgency. It has to do with the pay rise of judicial officers. And as I said just now, there is a time slot on the thirtieth of October at four thirty P M. And there are items to be followed up from the last term, as well as these two items. And if members find no further problems, we will discuss with the Secretariat and then seek the opinion of Ms. Elsie Long. We will discuss with the two legal professions and the Secretary for Justice, subject to further views from members and see whether we can schedule a meeting as soon as possible. As for these two items, these will be scheduled for the meeting on the thirtieth. Just now, Mr. Martin Liao raised his hand. So let's make a decision on that. Sorry, speaker's not coming through. Well, we have voted on it and we agreed that at a regular meeting, we will issue a letter inviting Ms. Elsie Long to come and we have taken about members' views. We're going to invite the two legal professions and the Secretary for Justice to come to the meeting on this important issue. If members all agree, then let's have a meeting next Tuesday on the thirtieth of October. On these two items proposed for discussion in October, the first two agenda items, as for the issue discussed just now, we will discuss with the Secretariat. And according to the Secretariat, we may have to prepare some information and to discuss the time, the schedule with the two legal professions. I hope all relevant parties can attend. Yes? Second item. The prosecution of a pernumery prose of Deputy Principal Government Counsel in the Prosecutions Division of the Department of Justice. And according to the Director of Administration, it's also a matter of urgency. So it's a second item on the agenda. So that's the situation. I welcome views on the agenda and we will discuss with the Secretariat as soon as possible on the arrangement of the item discussed today. Meetings adjourned, thank you.